Good evening. Welcome to early work session of the Highland Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, February 27th. Meeting is called to order at 6:00 PM. Let the record show all council members are present. Item number one on the agenda is an update from Fire Department Operations. Chief Carter.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Should be here coming up. Saw it on y'all's screen. So before we get started, I just want to say thank you to Lori and her staff for our video today at the State of the City and probably from the directors, thank you for not making us sing.
There's always next year.
Be careful what you wish for.
Thank you for not making us sing.
You're welcome.
And not next year either. So just to get us started here, and I looked at mine. I had some material. I made it real quick because I looked back here and PD brought a entourage. So I figured they have a lot to give you all, so I'll get through this. What I have, just kind of going forward, just kind of update you on where we're at, some of what we're going on, some calls types and some status stats. So I guess I have this. There we go. Here's our organization. We're broken into an A and B and C shift, kind of to make this a little, in a group chart. That kind of makes it a little easier to read. We currently have two administrative command staff, myself, and we're missing a person. So I'm actually, there's only one of us right now. I have 18 firefighter paramedics. I have two just straight paramedics that are on the 40-hour shift. One administrative assistant. I have two part-timers. And then it floats between somewhere between three, four, and eight to nine part-timers that help us meet our minimum daily staffing. So that's kind of our Fire Department.
I think he doesn't work.
Here's our apparatus. As y'all know, we have two engines, one staffed, one reserved. We have two medics, which y'all just purchased a new one to replace one of these back in November. One of those is staffed full-time. One other one now is being used part-time on our 8:00 to 8:00 power shift. And then just last meeting, y'all approved the purchase of a new brush truck. Both those won't be here for 18 to 24 months, as we talked about. So and the new one won't look like that brush truck. It's more a traditional brush truck and actually will fit our needs a little better. Oops. It worked. Our mission statement, to protect the lives and property of our community with exceptional care and service. And I really take pride in that, exceptional care and service. And that's the standard I expect. And our creed honestly is honor, integrity, and compassion. But in that exceptional care and service, we try to make a difference in somebody's life. Because generally, I know generally too, when people are calling us, they're having a problem. It's, you know, they're, we're not, it's a 911 call to help them. And so my directive to these people is make a difference in their life, whatever it is. Some of them, you know, so the care and compassion that they have to have, my guys, to make sure that we're making a difference in those people's lives. Because generally, it's, for the most part, it's not a good day for them. So, you know, we're trying to do, have that compassion to our citizens. So some of our awards that we are, were best practices through the Texas Fire Chiefs Association. We're Heart Safe Community through INTRAC. And we're a Storm Ready Facility through the National Weather Service. Storm Ready also includes Public Works. They're part of that. It takes a joint agreement, not agreement, but working together to have, to receive that for the city. Our reporting, where our reports go to, we report to the, what we call INFIRS, which is National Fire Incident Reporting, the TexasFIRS. And we report both these through a monthly report through the Texas State Fire Launches Office. So every month, we send our two data, and it goes to the state and to the federal government. Here are our calls for the past five years. They're broken in, those reports that we send, they're broken into nine categories. Inside of that, there's 176 subcategories within those nine. As you can see here, our trends have been going up. We did see it dip from last year to this year. And that goes, in this next slide, we'll break it down a little bit. But in '22, I don't remember you, when Flower Mound and Louisville kind of came to us and said, "Hey, let's look at reducing some of our mutual aid." As a group, we went back and said, "What can we do to help reduce our calls of dawn, I call level-two call types, so that we can make our primary calls?" So we evaluated, got with PD and IT to look at all our call types, what we were going on, and what we could maybe shave off of. And some of those were some welfare checks that we were going on. And we looked at those, and there was 120-something welfare checks. And we'd only transported like two people. So that, we were tying up our medic a lot for no use. Same thing with outside water leaks. We had quite a few of those. And Scott's like, "It's not creating any damage. We can take care of that. We have on-call people that can handle that." So we moved away from those calls, and that is the drop. And it ended up being about 174 calls for the year of '21.
What do you classify as a good-intent call?
Good intents is our, I've got a category here, just to make sure I give you the right ones. Good intents are canceled en route. In other words, dispatch cancels this. Somebody, a fire alarm goes off and somebody, like your, fire alarm goes off at your house, alarm company calls you, and you go, "It's all good. So we'll cancel en route." That's that type.
But what is different from a false alarm, then?
False alarm means that we got there, it was going off, but for no reason.
Okay.
So it was, it was actually, the difference in a fire alarm and a false alarm means it's going off, but it went off for no reason. So it's false.
That's the difference. So a false alarm is about an alarm. But so I guess the follow-up question would be, what's the difference between a good-intent call and a false call? Because you have false alarm and false call in that same 700 category.
A false call is the call, well, it's, that's the way they, the national, that's their breakdown of their categories. But when you break it down there, that's the difference, is the fire alarm or smoke alarm or a water flow sprinkler system that you got an alarm on, but when you got there, nothing was happening.
Okay. So false call is not like a prank call or something?
Correct. Yeah.
So is it then a good-intent call versus a false alarm, false call would be, you actually are showing up at that scene?
Well, and I was gonna, good-intent calls are also like steam. Somebody calls, report of smoke on somebody's house on a winter day. And we get there and it's a dryer pipe, dryer vent going, or their heater from their, like if they have a gas heater, and it's producing steam off the back of the call.
Being neighborly?
Being neighborly.
Okay.
But we show up and there's, there's no, there's no call there, really. So and then our odor investigations, we had a lot of these. That's how come one of those numbers, that's why it's 162, is somebody, a passerby or calls out and says, "We have smelling something." It could be natural gas, sewer gas, tar, somebody's using, if we're having somebody doing roofing in the commercial area, we get out there and it's, it's nothing. Those are good-intent calls.
Okay. Thank you.
I was gonna ask about that in the 700 series, because that's like the only category, except for rupture, explosion, or overheat, that's the only one that went up. And it went up by like 13%.
Correct. And that is, that's also our fire, it's, it, that's also the fire alarms, too, that are going off. So we've actually, our fire alarm calls have gone up drastically. Some of it's, our systems are getting older. I mean, you got the district. The district's replacing a lot of their systems right now, because they're 15, what, 16, 17-years-old now? You know, we, we tell you in your household that smoke alarms are good for 10 years, and you should replace them after that. Well, commercial fire alarms kind of fall in that same category. And with the district, we're starting to get now, they're working on it. They've got plans to replace it. We're working with RAVI, and they're, they, about half their buildings have been updated and replaced. But it's not a cheap fix. It's an expensive fix. So and we do, they get five free false alarms a year. And after that, you know, we work with PD and we do fine them. It's not a drastic fine. It's like it's $100 or somewhere in there. But it is a little incentive to figure out why those are going off.
Are the, I'm sorry, are the fire calls, are those all the fire calls within the community? Or these calls that we are cooperating with?
That's, that's our total calls.
Okay.
You know, we, we'll kind of go through on our next slide.
Okay.
To break that out. So.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So this is more of it. Fire alarms, your smoke alarms should be replaced every 10 years?
Correct.
What about carbon monoxide detectors?
Five.
And fire extinguishers?
They have to be, they're supposed to, they're supposed to have their powder inside them changed out every six, and the extinguisher is supposed to be rehydrated every 12.
Okay. Six. I'm just, this is more of a public service thing to make sure that my household's in compliance. Thank you.
Here's kind of the breakdown of our, of our calls. So of the 1621 of those, you can see the fire and EMS breakdown. And out of that, was that 365 of those 16 were, actually, I used to say outside. That's the given. So 200 of those 1621 were outside somewhere. Now, I will have to say through all that, if you look, this is the first year in, I don't know how long, our calls going out was more than the calls coming in, which is, that's what we, that's what we've been striving for, is to quit borrowing so much from our neighbors. So this is, if you look, it's, and part of that.
It flipped.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that significant increase, is that due to availability? Or is that due to just more calls?
It's twofold. One is, is more calls in the Flower Mound 407 corridor. And the other one is to help reduce our call volume a little bit with Flower Mound, is we're running Lake Cities a little bit more now, too. So we've opened up another partner to kind of, so we all share the.
Right. What I'm saying is, you, our number of going, where we're giving aid, it went up. That's a pretty significant increase.
Correct.
Is that because we're actually, the way things are structured, we're more available to give the aid? Or is it just straight attributable to just a higher call volume?
Both.
Okay.
Both. And interesting you said that, and you talk about call volume-wise. And I didn't really, I caught it today in the, in the presentation that Flower Mound did, is in their singing video that he did. He said he answered, Flower Mound had 7,300 calls for the year. And of course, that's, I was paying attention to spark my interest. That's seven stations. So that's about 2.8-something calls per day. We're at 1621 for one station, which is 4.4 calls per day. So we're almost double the call volume per station per day. So I mean, it's kind of, they got some stations that make one or two calls a week.
Right.
Now they have Station 1 that makes a ton of calls. But if you just amortize that out, we make double the calls per station than what Flower Mound makes. Now Louisville outruns us, so, and so does Denton. But we are, we are the third busiest, if you look at it from totality, just at a 30,000-foot shot. We're the third busiest station in the Denton County, with Louisville first, Denton first, Louisville, and then us. So we are busy. Our times, we lost, I think we went down four seconds. And when I went back and looked at the whys, it's generally in travel. We're getting more traffic. You can see the, the mutual aid response in, especially on the fireside. You're, you know, we're looking at 22 minutes, a lot of times getting that second engine in for us. And that's, that's forever. Hopefully, we went, it was about a month ago, three weeks ago, Brenda, with the radios, the portables? We're trying something out, Brenda and myself and the Flower Mound supervisor and their fireside. Because right now, or in the past, when we needed, or communications needed an engine or an ambulance, picked the phone up, called. They got put on hold some. You wouldn't think they would put another agency on hold, but they do. To get the ambulance going, and it's a tone-out, and it's a domino effect. We met, like I said, three weeks ago. We found a channel that both of us could listen to that's not our normal working channel. It's strictly a dispatch-to-dispatch radio channel. And I've, I've heard it go out a couple of times. I don't know how it's working. Because it's, it's trial and error right now. I think once we get a couple of months into this and see how it works, mightn't Louisville into it. We didn't want to go with all three cities at first, and, but we want to get the bugs worked out. And that, hopefully, will reduce that down, so that there's not a lot of delay in the phone calls. And the delay is huge.
The majority of the delay is the phone calls and?
Well, it's, it's just a, it's a, and Brenda probably can speak more to this, and, because she sees it every day. But I do know, I've been in there, is we'll call them, they put us on hold. I've seen them hang up and want to call us back. I mean, I've seen all kinds of things. Just in the short time that I was in there, and Brenda will probably tell you horror stories about it. And then they look at their availability, and then they have to dispatch out their people.
It's more of the process.
It's a process thing. So.
A lot of moving parts.
It's a lot of moving parts in it. And we're working on some of that. Flower Mound gave us access, so we could see their apparatus and see if it's available or not. So we're kind of trying to look at some different cost-effective ways to reduce that. Because we're, it's the same for us going the other way. So.
So these are the average response times. What's the target? And then what, since that's average, what's our spread?
It's, well, I don't have the spread with us. Our target is six minutes.
Okay.
That's, that's, and we're doing good in dispatch. We're doing good in turnout. We don't do good in travel.
Traffic.
In traffic. You know, the solution for that is, is the, kind of the, the bad word is another station on the other side of town. But for the 30 seconds that it's there, is that worth the cost of that station at this point in time? And I can't, I can't stand here and justify that to y'all. I mean, truthfully. We're, we're at, we're doing good. We get the second medic in. Our utilization of the medics will be there. Our time's going to be a little bit. But, you know, for 30 seconds or 25 seconds, or if we get some of this other work out, maybe 15 seconds, is that justifiable enough to come to you and ask for, you know, a multimillion-dollar station on the other side of town? I just can't, I can't get up here and defend it right now. We get some stuff built on the other side of the bridge, and how, whatever that looks like years down the road, maybe so. But today, no. And so I'll live with us being outside that, that metrics a little bit. Our citizens, you know, it's 15 seconds or 20 seconds on service to our citizens. But that's a dual, I mean, that's, that's not every citizen. There's some citizens in there that were at, you know, four minutes. And there's some that are at eight. But it's, it is what it is. So.
For mutual aid up north, is that with the Lake Cities? Aren't they all one?
Actually, our Lake Cities calls are on the highway.
Well, so I was wondering, are you the ones that respond to the traffic accident that happens every morning on the north side of the bridge? Is that part of your?
We go up to the northern boundary of the Second Bridge.
Okay. Okay.
So that's through our county. That's, that's county area right there. And we, the county pays us every year to cover that. And it's not much area, but outside our city limits to the end of the, the north side of the Second Bridge.
Okay. Okay.
And then Corinth comes to there.
Same way?
Corinth comes, Corinth, Lake Cities.
Okay. That's what I thought. They have?
It's Corinth. Corinth owns the Fire Department.
Okay.
They call it Lake Cities, but it's, they're all, it's all Corinth. All right. Kind of the exciting things moving forward, that we have coming, you know, I've kind of mentioned it, and that's our, in our slide of personnel, was our two employees. Our second 40-hour employee starts on the 6th, so in a week and a half or so, and we will be fully staffed. We've been in and out using the second medic as we have had staffing to do it. So it's, it hasn't been fully in. It's been, some days it's in, some days it's out. But hopefully, he'll have to get through some, a little bit of training, a couple of weeks of training process. But after that, we should be in full-time with our second. And I put brush truck, second medic, because the two, actually 40-hour medics are going out, or actually run out on the frontline medic. And we're putting firefighter paramedics on this medic and the brush. And the reason I say that is that that allows them to float between those two pieces of equipment. For trash fires, car fires, we increased the water capacity on the brush truck coming in to kind of fit those needs, which then allows our million-dollar engine not to have to make all those calls, saves on wear and tear on the maintenance. It also keeps it free for other calls, too. So that's how come it shows brush truck, second medic. So and so the utilization of this new brush truck coming in, we kind of designed it for that purpose of being able to dual-purpose. So we're getting, we'll get more bang for our buck of our employees this way.
That's pretty cool.
So that will have to, Ms. Herman and I, we sit down and work through a lot of this. And he championed, he challenged me, and I championed him, and he, I challenged him, and we came up with this program. So I think that it's, and what's funny is now I'm here, and the city of Dallas has gone to it. City of Dallas has gone to this 8:00 PM overload program. So there's, it's, it's changing. I heard somebody else the other day, when I was in a convention down in Austin, that they're looking at this. So it's gonna, it's, I wouldn't say we're trendsetters, but we're at the front of the line of people who are doing some of this. So.
You are. You're part of the cool kids.
So. And the next one is, is, we saw back in January, is, was the groundbreaking of the joint training facility. I checked on it the other day, and they didn't give me a date. But right now, it's in the first quarter of 2025 for the tri-city training facility. This is going to be huge for us. For one, it's, you know, 10 minutes down the road versus having to go to Robeson Ranch, because that's where Denton's is, our DFW airport. We can be over there. I can get some coverage here. And that's the other thing with the brush truck, with the people in, I can keep it in town, keep the medic in town. I can still run full EMS and send my engine over there to do some training for an hour or two hours, or whatever that is. The reason that's important is, I ran the numbers, it's kind of scary. And in our three ranks, our firefighters, drivers, and captains, our firefighters right now have a tenure of three years. So all my rank-wise, a firefighter, paramedics, we have a tenure of three years. I'm like, ooh, that's scary. My drivers goes up drastically, which is good, because they have, we have the mentoring that occurs in that. And they're on those same calls. They go, they're with them on the calls. Is 12, which is not great, but better than the three. And then my captain's is 15. So, and we won't go what admin is. Because with me and my two part-timers, we're, we're like.
100.
Well, we're like 36. So. But, but we need this drastically. This will, this is huge. And the call volume, I really don't mind the call volume, because as we all know, OJT is huge. And if, for a young department like we are, making those 1,600, 1,700 calls is, that is great training for the, for the guys we have, guys and gals. So I'm kind of glad that we are as busy as we are. It really does. For one, it keeps them from having idle minds. And two is, it keeps them trained. And so we're, with this, with this and the call volume that we have, gives us, of course, our guys are great as it is, and they're going to be even better. I say guys, it's guys and gals. So.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Anything? All right.
I didn't think you were gonna take 20 seconds.
I'll turn the rest of the time over to PD and their, their big group.
Thank you.
So item number two is an update on the Police Department operations. And Chief Rhime would present, but he's homesick, I think, so we'll have a.
Actually, yes, Chief Rhime couldn't make it today. He's given me permission. He said he's briefed HR on it, that he tested positive for COVID this morning. So otherwise, he would be here. He really wanted to come and wear this hat. But I told him I'd bring it up and have it here.
Oh, you gotta put it on.
Well, I didn't tell him that, but I told him I'd have it here in spirit.
Put it on, you might wind up with COVID.
I did spray it down first, before I came. So, all right. Okay. The way we're going to do this today is, we're going to do this as a team effort. I'm going to start it off and kind of give you the overview of the department for most items. And then we're going to break it down and have each one of our unit leaders come up and talk about their section. We'll have Brenda Grove talk about communications. And we'll have Commander Slieter talk about field operations. And then we'll have Corporal Harney talk about community services. And then Wes Fettis will talk to you about animal, animal services. So we're going to start out here with Sir Robert Peel's Principles of Law Enforcement. I know you've heard Chief Rhime talk about this a lot. This is really a core thing that our department has adopted. As you can see, Sir Robert Peel, in England in 1829, started the police force there, the London Metropolitan Police Force. And 200 years ago, he came up with these basic principles. These are paraphrased a little bit, because the original one is quite long and written in old English. But if you read through those, what was valid back then is even more valid today. They've withstood the test of time, and we live by these and practice these daily. And we've even incorporated these principles into our general orders. Our mission statement, you can see that there. We have, to boil that down, our challenge coin there. We have on the back, "Treat everyone with respect and fairness. Expel and excel in your profession. Train up and have fun." Our motto is, "Here to serve." Our police oversight and reporting standards. We adhere to the best practices standards that the Texas Police Chiefs Association recognition program has established. We've been recognized by them since 2009, so over 10 years now. We have to annually report to them our status that we're maintaining certifications. And they come onsite here once every four years to verify that what we're saying is, is right. The national incident-based reporting system, that's where we report our crimes to DPS and the FBI as far as the amount of actual crime that occurs here in Highland Village. And then the NFPA standards for fire and EMS dispatching. Of course, our, our dispatch doesn't dispatch, it's a public safety dispatch. Dispatches police, fire, EMS, and animal services. Words in recognition, you can see over the past 20 years, that's, that's our list. Most recently, however, this past year, 2023, we were recognized as the third safest city in Texas. Usually, we've been in the top 10, at least for the past 10 years or so. And we had our last onsite re-recognition visit in 2022 from the Chiefs Association. Our budget, here's our current police budget that was approved by council last year. The budget includes, of course, not only the salary costs for police officers, communication officers, our public safety officers, our civilian personnel records, crossing guards, animal services, but also training, our equipment, our vehicles, and everything it takes to run our department. Here's a copy of our org chart. We have, of course, field operations on the left-hand side under Commander Slieter. That's the largest one. We also have an administrative sergeant that assists Commander Slieter. That sergeant is over CID, the PSOs. And then Brenda Grove is our communications supervisor. She's over all communications. And we annually look at this org chart and make adjustments as needed. There we go. This is our staffing shown another way. You can see the breakdowns. The numbers in red are what the current shortages are. So currently, we're short one police officer and one dispatcher. Our staffing goals for patrol, our staffing goal is to have four officers on duty at any time. And that includes a supervisor. For dispatch, we, our minimum staffing is one, but we have a staffing goal of two dispatchers on during our peak times. And the peak staffing times are eight in the morning to midnight, Monday through Friday, and then Saturday and Sunday, as you see there. Public safety initiatives, this is a list of projects and programs and, and budget items that have been approved and we've implemented, starting with most recent. In our budget last year, we got approved the red dot sites and transitioned to Glock handguns this year. We're in the process of doing that. That's going to take several more months. We got approved the external vest carrier systems, which we're in the process of getting those with the new body armor. And if you haven't seen those, Corporal Harney and Officer McKelvey are both wearing the, the new style external vest carrier vests. So. And those are very ergonomic. They, they get the weight off of your, your waist and move it up to your vest. So it's a lot better for your back and ergonomically correct. Video to 911 enhancement, Denko is fixing to roll out basically a FaceTime ability to 911 Communication Center. That's, that's pending. Trike personal patrol vehicle. David's going to bring one out here in a minute during his section to show you that. But we've purchased those and just got the people trained on that. Our opticon preemption system, the fire department has had these for years. When they respond to a call, it will give the emergency vehicle priority going through a red light. The police vehicles have never had them. But, so this year, council approved that program, and we've got them all installed now, and it's been working very well. And we're hoping it's going to help reduce some of our response times, especially to the priority one calls. The police support dog program, I think everyone's heard of Ollie by now. He's been doing great. And all the rest of them there, you've heard at previous meetings. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Brenda Grove, our communications supervisor. And she'll brief you on some stats on her unit.
Good evening. Let's see, is it this one? I haven't done this before. This one?
Yeah, it takes a little bit, so you have to hit it a couple times.
Oh, goop. Too many times. Okay, this is how long it takes my dispatchers to answer a 911 call. We're, I'm regulated by the National Fire Protection Association. They, oh, sorry. They give us standards as to when we have to make these, how quickly we can answer these calls. I have to congratulate my training officers, because we have two training officers, and most of our new dispatchers are brand new, less than six months. And they're still answering these calls within that timeframe. Which sometimes can be difficult when you get a traffic accident on Justin Road or Village Parkway, you'll get five, six 911 calls for that one accident. But they have to verify that that same accident is the same accident that everybody's reporting, because you could have one at one end of Village Parkway and one at the other end. This is the response time. For our dispatchers, we try to make sure that they get, from the second they answer the call till they dispatch it, they have one minute. And they're doing it in 24 seconds. Okay. So from the time that 911 phone initially rings until they can get it dispatched is 24 seconds. The time for them after once we've dispatched that to the patrol units, now this is just patrol, we're not counting fire department in these numbers. For patrol to be dispatched to arrival time is four minutes. So for, between dispatch and patrol, it takes the average of about four and a half minutes for them to get there. These are all the call types depending on their priority. Priority ones are the most important calls that we need to get to as quickly as possible. And of course, all those are medical emergencies, alarms, structured fires, that kind of stuff. Priority twos are like far calls that are not like a structure fire. Assaults, disturbances, that kind of thing. And then everything else kind of falls into category of priority threes. And these are the major calls for service that we have. The majority of our time is spent handling 911 hangups, which means when we answer 911, there's nobody there. So then we have to take the time. Luckily, our 911 system is getting better and better every year with how they are able to map that 911 call. We are down to now that if you make a 911 call in one of these schools out here, we can tell you what room it's coming from. Chief Stewart mentioned it shortly this year. In fact, I think it's going to be next week before we get it installed, they'll be adding video and photos to 911. So we can send a caller a link, and that link stays open for 30 minutes. They have 30 minutes to send us any pictures that they want to send, any video that they get, like if they're out on a track back accident and they took a video of the damage on their car, they can send that to us. And then we can clue that into the officer's report.
How, how do you, on a 911 one hangup call, are each of those calls also followed up with a officer to the house?
Yes.
On each and every one of those?
Every one of them. Yeah, we attempt, from dispatch, we attempt to call that number back. Sometimes we get an answer and the people will say, no, no, I don't have an emergency. Well, our policy is whether they have an emergency or not, you've called 911. So there's going to be an officer that's going to come by just to check to make sure everything's okay.
Okay.
It's a little more difficult when we get to places like Walmart, because if they don't answer, we have to go around Walmart and we check and make sure that there's no disturbances, anything going on in Walmart. Okay. Next calls are all medical related calls. Those are the ones that, because our officers are ECA trained, a lot of times they can get there before EMS gets there, and then they can get started before that. Also on those medical related calls, the dispatchers are also giving instructions on the phone for somebody that may be having a heart attack, anything like that. So they can go ahead and start CPR from the phone before officers or EMS arrives. Suspicious activity can be anything from, there's a vehicle parked in my cul-de-sac that I don't recognize, to somebody's walking down the street. That can cover a whole big area of anybody that calls in saying there's something that's not normal, then we'll send them out on a suspicious activity. The rest of them are pretty much average calls, so I'm not going to go over all the categories. But those three, top three ones are the main categories that we deal with daily. Yes, ma'am?
What is prisoner related?
Prisoner related is anytime, we have a holding facility, so we have individuals that we have here. So prison related is if there's somebody in the jail that wants to make a phone call that's outside of the normal time, they would make a phone call.
Okay.
Or we have some prisoners that say, I've, I'm sick, I need an ambulance.
Okay.
So we'll have them go back there. I think that was it. Commander Slieter?
I gotta get a new picture up there. Mayor, council, city staff, Commander Carl Slieter, field operations and CID. Just a overview of our police fleet. We have 20 total in the fleet, 15 patrol, VIP, CID, CID, ACO and PCO, and the chief's cars, five bikes, eight, one mule, and now the new trikes. I always say this, but I really do appreciate the city, the council for providing us the best equipment possible. I had a young officer come into my office, and he worked at another department. And the vehicles that we provide and the systems that are in them vehicles are top notch. So we really do appreciate that. Some of our police technology, I think Chief Stewart said, or listed some of these, but the trike personal patrol vehicles, like you'll see pretty quickly here, body cams, top of the line. As you know, in this day and age, you have to have a body cam for the business that we're doing. And the technology that we have is the best. Virtual reality training, the optagon, like Chief said, hopefully it will reduce our, our time to going through traffic to accidents, family violence and such. Flock camera systems, I can't say enough about them. We've had a lot of hits on, on vehicles that we've made some good arrests on that bad people were in the city. So we do appreciate that. 911 call monitoring, it's funny, my niece is a great fine police officer, and we were texting, and she, she, she wrote an email to, to her 911 supervisor how the information didn't get out to her, and she could have probably caught this guy. With our 911 monitoring capability, and I was telling her about it, the officers can hear the 911 call in the vehicle real time. So if a dispatcher misses, misses something, which they rarely do, the officer hears that. You know, they might hear something different than the 911 call operator. Excuse my voice. Cell phone, ticket writers, technology. I probably couldn't, if you put one in front of me, I probably wouldn't know how to use it right now. But the guys really love them. Mobile electric, electronic message board, you'll see them around town. Our SkyWatch, we try to place it in high populated areas of shopping centers and such, and our special events. Live scan fingerprints, that's when you get arrested by the Highland Village Police Department, you're, you're fingerprinted, and it's a computer system, a computer, and that, that fingerprint automatically goes into the database. And we've had hits from that system.
Question?
Yep.
On the 911 monitoring, who or what takes priority? You've got dispatch on the phone with 911, but you got officers monitoring. What's dispatch?
Dispatch.
Makes the call no matter?
Yeah, they, they can't talk to the people or anything.
Okay, they can just listen. Okay.
They're just listening and, you know, gaining information. So it makes a speedier call for them to get there. They'll hear it, I mean, a minute for our dispatch to, to, to dispatch a call is pretty good.
Okay.
You know, I mean, that's amazing. But just with that technology, the officers hearing that live.
Okay.
So they hear, they can hear the address that the call is coming from and it already being routed before they really even know?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
The live scans fingerprints, are those, and you said they're, they're attached to the database. Are they also attached to a national database?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Like if somebody has a warrant that maybe wasn't entered, and that warrant would be in there. Or, you know, a suspect, or immigration, or, you know, any type of, you know, whatever that case may be.
We get a bad actor out of Minnesota, we could get fingerprints, we can pick it up.
Exactly. Yeah, it's a national NCIC. Let's have it here. Police equipment, once again, thank you all and the citizens for the best equipment possible. Protection equipment, ballistic shields, helmets, and body armor in all of our vehicles. Our body armor is top of the line. We have the wrap system. We just got another two, one for training, and one for the jail, and a cart. And we have utilized the wrap. And with
Is that the seatbelt de-looky thing?
It is.
That the guys all wrapped up in?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And I don't have to tell you, but, you know, the increase of mental health issues in this country has also affected the way we operate and the way we interact with citizens. And the wrap has helped tremendously. It doesn't hurt the person. It actually calms them down. It's almost like a security blanket, doesn't look like one. But it makes them, makes us have the ability to transport that person safely to jail or an EDO mental facility. Pepper spray, taser, impact munitions, you see that there on, there on the right, 40 millimeter sponge round, lethal force sigs right now, update pending, weapon mounted lighting systems, ARs, red dots, and Mossberg Here's our districts. As you can see, we have five patrol districts. E is the shopping center. A is, it goes from A to B to C to D. And then the park is part of D. AORs, areas of responsibilities, we started by 19 years ago. And what that does is, I think it's one of the, the best programs we have. It puts an officer in that area, and they are basically assigned to that area. They can't be there all day, we understand that, when there's, you know, four total officers on, on shift. But they're required to do at least two hours in that AOR. What they do is they patrol it, they look for open garage, you all heard about the open garages, signs that might be down, intersections that might be trimmed, and, and making positive impact in their little city upon a city. Reported offenses, this is Nibers. So you're going to see some offenses here that are, you're like, oh, wow. But Nibers, like Chief Stewart explained, is a grouping of offenses placed for reporting purposes for the FBI. So if you see a kidnapping, well, that might not been a kidnapping. That might, I know exactly what that call was. That was a, a child enticing case, that the person was out of state. So that, that call was classified as a kidnapping. But that's just the system that the FBI or the federal bureau uses to report crimes. And you can see from 21 to 23. Arrests, 2023, 162 males, females 53. You can see their age there and their race. Citations, 2023, for an example, 77% were warnings, 33% were actual court citations. And you can also, we've added the data of Highland Village residents. And you can see they're the highest group that, that are, that are pulled over with a 22%. And then Denton, 13%. Flower Mound, 11. Louisville, 11. Corin, 5. Dallas, 4. And other, 34%.
The violations, specifically driver's license, there's 295 in 2023. Obviously, they weren't stopped because of the driver's license.
Right.
So how are they classified as driver's license? Is it, I'll let you explain.
Somebody runs a stop sign, we walk up and, and their license is expired, or they don't have a driver's license, then that would be classified in that.
So you wouldn't classify the, the offense, the initial offense, you're going to classify it as the?
It's usually, nine times out of 10, it's usually a secondary offense.
Okay. So they may get a warning for the stop sign, but they'll get the offense for the driver's license then?
Or hopefully that way. But it could happen the other way, where they get a warning for the, the stop sign and a, or a citation for the stop sign and a warning for the, the driver's license. Hopefully, it works that way. We don't want to give people warnings for not having a driver's license. Community policing activities, since I've been here, 22 years, I think we do a pretty good job of it. I really do. And I think it all starts with who we hire. You can see some of the programs that, that, that these officers are doing on a daily basis. And the amount of activities that they are doing, 16,456 activities of community policing. These guys are in their AORs, they're making school checks, they're working with Corporal Harney to go eat school lunches. And I don't think I have to tell you, you know, that our community policing model is pretty strong, and it has been for a while. So you can see there that we do a lot. Yes, ma'am?
What are kid coupons?
Kid coupons are like if somebody's wearing a bike helmet, and I'm going to let Harney talk a little bit more about that, because we're going to start pushing that a lot more, obviously with the trikes and the, the kids on the scooters that are wearing helmets. We have like several We have like several different restaurants that, I think, what is it, Harney, how many, what is it, the ice cream shop?
Freo Joe.
Freo, yeah.
Cookies, I mean, we've got several places, but we're about to add a lot more.
Yeah.
One last, do you, do you guys still do the, and this is not the check on our elderly population thing? I don't know what it's called, do we still do that?
Not as much since April left.
Okay.
Yeah. A lot of the elderly, we do have a program called the STAR program, and our officers are all trained in that program. The STAR program is that if they encounter an elderly person, and a lot of times it's the children of the elderly person will come to us and say, hey, you know, my father has Alzheimer's, what do I do? Well, there's a lot of resources that we can't provide for Alzheimer's, but we can provide the STAR program. And that, what that is, is basically a registry program with a picture and vital information that's stored in dispatch in case that we get the phone call that that person is in need, and then we have back information to help those people out. And we do, you know, we try to get into Rambling Oaks and, you know, show up there, talk to them and such. ECA program has been really good for us. It's helped the officers understand that critical response when they first arrive on scene. And it's not an EMT, but it's one below that. So they know how to do blood pressure, they know how to, you know, wrap a wound, and that also helps for the, for the officers within themselves in case there's a critical event. We have the equipment to, you know, help each other out also, because they're trained. And you can see there, we have 18 certified, and we have five in training, four pending because they haven't been here long enough to start their training, and then obviously two open positions. All right.
Good evening. Thank you for having us, Mayor, Council, city staff, we appreciate it. So I'm Corporal Harney, the Community Services Corporal. Officer McKelvey's here with me tonight, and we're your school resource officers. So we, there we go. So just a little update on the numbers for our schools. Briar Hill, where I am at every day, we have 815 students at Briar Hill. We have 380 at Highland Village Elementary, 540 at McCullough, and 510 at Heritage. And so Officer Ben spends his time going from elementary to elementary every day, visiting with all the students, the staff, doing those things, just building a positive relationship with our younger ones, playing football, basketball, foursquare, you know, whatever they're doing, he's hanging out with them, reading, all those things. So we're doing all those things at our schools. Some of the highlights from this last year, this past year, I was named the LISD SRO of the Year. And Officer McKelvey has been nominated for SRO of the Year this year, and we will find out finalists March, mid-March. So we're really, we're hoping to keep that trophy in Highland Village for another year. Definitely deserves it. So Officer McKelvey and I are both obtained our trike master instructor certification along with Sergeant Pittenger and Corporal Vargis. And then Officer McKelvey and I will both be attending the alert, Level 1 Train the Trainer Active Shooter class in the Colony over spring break. So that's a week-long training. Okay, so LISD has gone to the Guardian program to fill the need for House Bill III that came down in the last legislative session. So they have an armed personnel at each elementary school and at the different sub-scholes in LISD, so like the Career Centers, places like that, even at the Aquatic Center and at the Outdoor Learning Center. So we have, we have folks out there every day. All Guardians are clearly visible, but you can see by this picture, they have the bright yellow shirt and they are wearing ballistic vests as well. They have first aid kits and things on their vests, so they're prepared for a lot of things. All of our schools have, all of our HV schools, elementary schools have a Guardian each day. They do rotate each day as to just keep things fresh, and they don't become part of the staff. So they're just, because the Guardians are there to protect. So they are out on the playgrounds, when kids are on the playground, they're out in front of the school at drop off and pickup, and they're there to handle a, help handle a critical incident if it breaks out, and Officer Ben is not at that school. So that's, that's kind of their four jobs. They are not, they are not to replace the SRO. The SRO is still there to build relationships, add protection, things like that. They have a very specific job. So, yes, sir.
So one question I asked in a meeting I had in the superintendent's office a few months ago when this was kind of, I guess, being rolled out, didn't really get it, I think, a total answer, maybe you can now.
Okay.
You've had some time with the system. If there is an incident in the school, who has operational control when it happens? You in our department, or the Guardian slash LISD security way off in the operations?
We have operational control.
Okay, good.
Yes, ma'am.
I know the state has been working to map all these schools with drones. Have you guys had yours done yet?
So LISD is working on the high schools now. I think the high schools are done, and it's budgetary items, it's very expensive, mapping. So they are working on, yes, they are working on it. So it is in the process.
Good to know.
So our Guardians, they must pass an extensive background and interview process, and they're receiving, they're receiving 100 hours of training, and that blows the state mandate out of the water. The guys that are controlling this program and leading this program are great guys, and they are very, very passionate about this. So they're doing a great job over there. So micromobility, we have, we worked together over the summer to enhance the micromobility ordinance, and Officer McKelvey and I will be rolling out education at our schools starting next week, the 5th through the 8th, just in time for spring break. And we will also be working with other students in our, in our city, such as homeschool students, to have dates where they can come and we can also help them, educate them.
I would like to get on that email list, please.
Okay, yeah.
For the homeschool, private school kids.
Okay, yeah, yeah, great. We're definitely, we would actually love to build that relationship with them as well. So the, so the education process will include a flyer with the highlights of the ordinance on it, and will be distributed to the students at the elementary schools. That will be sent home to their parents, and then we'll hand them to the middle school kids.
Can y'all, can you work with the administration to ensure that, because I know a lot of things get put in a backpack and
Yeah.
It may not come out till Friday or Sunday night.
Yeah, and so
Email communication goes out, say, hey, check for this?
Sure, yeah, we can, we'll definitely hit all those realms where, now, middle schoolers, I make no guarantees. So I, I don't know what to tell you there. So those of you that are in the thick of it with your middle schoolers right now, I'm sorry. But I can't make any guarantees that they're going to get home with it, that they're, they're not going to force them to take the flyer home. I'm going to give it to them and we're going to go from there.
Hence the need for communication.
Yeah, so, but we will be communicating all that. They, we'll be using the trikes to help facilitate that training at the schools. And on the website, we're updating the website right now to the micromobility, with the new micromobility requirements, the ordinance, and there'll also be a portion in there where you can request a time to, for us to do a training, and we will start setting up trainings at different times. So we're not going to do one just for one person, but we'll try to set up a class for multiple people at certain times.
Well, we have a few pod schools. I think we have, at least in my neighborhood, four or five pod schools.
Okay.
So that's already got a group of kids.
That, yeah, just, you can, you'll be able to email Officer Ben and I, and we'll, we'll get started working on that. So here is the trike, the, the equipment of the hour, but if you haven't seen these in action, let us know if you want to see it. It's quite the, it's quite the equipment, and thank you all very much, because this is a great, a great tool that we're going to be able to use. The kids love it, too. We've been out on it, kids love it, they're, you know, they're very impressed and they're also disappointed, because they're not the coolest kids anymore, we are. Let's see, trying, there we go. And then the police support dog program, Ollie, everybody loves Ollie. Ollie makes us cooler. And so we take Ollie to the schools. Ollie is there to help everybody feel happier. First responders, students, crime victims, teachers, I get teacher requests all the time, can you please bring Ollie? Can you please bring Ollie? We set up kind of a triage station at Briar Hill a few weeks ago, and let Ollie just hang out with the teachers during their lunches. We brought chips and queso, and everyone was super happy, so. But he visits the schools quite often, and we're hoping to take Ollie more.
Is he going to get trike certified?
We may use it to run some of the energy, but
Little packs on your
Little packs, yeah, we have a sidecar. But, yeah, so Ollie loves coming to the school. So thank you, Council. Officer Ben and I love being part of the schools. If you don't know what's happening at LISD, please check it out. There's some amazing things happening in our schools. And I know from my own kids and from other kids, but there are some incredible things happening in our schools. There's also some really tough things happening, too, that we see every day. So all these things that you have provided us, that the communities provided us, helps to make, help the happy times and the tough times. So thank you very much.
Real quick.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, overemphasize what you guys are doing. When my five-year-old comes home and mentions Officer Ben, my name, it just shows that it's reflecting every single day. And without me having to introduce, and it's just setting a foundation of standard that they're going to carry through elementary, through middle, and then hopefully through high school, especially in this neighborhood. And it's, like I said, it's a reflection of the effort and the, I guess, the understanding of the direction that we need to start going to try to familiarize our kids and say, hey, this is, we're setting a standard for you, and this is where we're going to keep it.
Yes, and Officer Ben has done a great job getting in there with the elementary kids. You know, we have been in the schools for forever. When I first started as an SRO, I helped at Marcus High School. One of the first students I met at Marcus High School now has a student at Briar Hill. Okay, so a few years, a few years happened in there, but yes, the importance of being in the schools, we'll never be able to quantify that ever, ever, ever. So thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Wes, I am the Animal Control Officer for the city, and we're going to go over some stats about animal services. So currently, we have, just myself as full-time staff for animal control, but in the last year, we have certified five additional police officers, which means they've gone and taken the Animal Control Basic Course and taken the test and are certified under the state. To maintain that certification, they have to take 30 hours of continuing education over a three-year period, and that renews every three years. So we have five of them now that have gone through that process, making six total people available that have training. The call for service numbers, you can see, have been pretty consistent over the last three years. I would like to point out that those call for service numbers are my numbers. That does not include any numbers that police officers or anyone else responds to. So that 600 is what I do when I'm here.
What do you, your citations and warnings have almost doubled, basically doubled, year over year and over the last two years? What do you attribute that to?
So I have been given some guidance and pointing towards how we want to handle our policies and how things are
Be a little stricter.
Being handled, yes. A little less on the lenient side, and again, not being too heavy-handed, but being a little more stringent with certain things.
Okay. And then second question I was going to ask on the trap permits. We, I think it was 2021?
May of '21, yes, sir.
Yeah, we did the deal with, if you, you could either request a trap for a fee or for a higher fee, have you come set it up? The numbers look, where I was going is, the last two years, the numbers of trap permits have gone down. Do you attribute that to, is what we did back then, is it working, or is it not working the way we wanted it to?
So when we switched to charging a fee for those services, there's a lot of people who don't want to pay for it. So they'll say they'll handle it themselves, they'll hire someone, so we have seen a rather steep drop off. We also didn't necessarily do permits before that point, because that's also when the ordinance changed.
Right.
And the ordinance required a permit at that point. So we don't, and that was halfway through the year, because that was October of '21, I believe, the ordinance changed, so you're only going to see the last little bit of that year in '21. But yes, when we switched to the permitting process and charging a fee for those services, there was a rather drastic decrease in how many people wanted those services.
I may be getting ahead, maybe in a difference, a subsequent slide, but by the same token, your requests coming to you to come pick up a trapped animal, have they stayed the same? Are you seeing a difference there that coincides with any of this?
So we have regular people who trap. As I've talked to them over the years and they realize there's a fee for that, they've either stopped trapping, don't call me, or have hired a service.
Okay.
So I would say that anything trap-related has decreased since '21. That's a little bit about our animal shelter. So we have 10 dog kennels and 14 cat kennels. Average shelter stays, you can see, have decreased over the years, and that's average length of time between all animals. So if we get an animal in, in 2021, it would spend an average of 33 days with us. 33 days in '22, and then 21 days in '23. Our shelter intakes have stayed fairly consistent, it's usually around the 100 mark. We saw a pretty big uptick in '23 with surrenders. You can see those trap numbers, so when we say trap numbers with that, as far as shelter, that's going to be feral cats. Wildlife is not going to be counted in statistics. Born in shelter, had a pretty crazy year in '22, it's mostly kittens. And then quarantines and seizures, again, those stay pretty consistent. Overall intake, fairly consistent, that 150 to 200 mark is usually what we see. Shelter adoptions, approximately 100, return to owners, approximately 50. There's a big change in the transfers in '23. You can see from our Shelter Service Contract note, a contract with All American Dogs provides for cleaning, feeding, and general care for the animals since '22. They also provide on-call emergency ACO services and adoption surrender services. So on the next slide, we have guidelines for when we surrender those animals. So animals that are with us too long or have needs can be surrendered to them, so that's why you see that transfer number so much higher, because that policy was implemented at the end of '22. Trap neuter release, that was something new, that was started again with the '21 ordinance revision. You can see that's been going up every year. I would say 90% of the citizens that we do this program for or involved in it love it. So I have, I've got one area of the city right now that I've trapped probably 20 in the last year, and everyone's happy about it. So it's working out well. Euthanized, you can see we had a pretty big spike in '23. We have a slide addressing that and why that happened, same with Died. that and why that happened. Same with died. So, like I was saying, our adoption surrender policy, using All American Dog, using the All American Dogs Adoption Surrender Program, the animal care officer may request supervisory approval to use this program with the below discretionary guidelines. A dog or cat with a cumulative shelter stay of 14 days, or if the shelter recommended capacity of five dogs or six cats is exceeded, then the animals of the species with the longest shelter stay may be transferred. This leaves shelter space for incoming animals at large, which are owned, which may be later returned to their owner. Animals with special needs or extended care requirements, such as pregnant nursing or species other than are common for our facility, are also guidelines that I can request to transfer. So, you know, if I get 12 guinea pigs in, we're not really set up for that. I can request a transfer to them, to someone who's a little more capable of caring for those animals.
Do you track once the animals have been transferred to see what their adoption rate is?
We, do we?
We don't track that. The All American Dogs does. They, they told us they have a 90%.
We don't track that, because once the animals are transferred, they're no longer our responsibility. But their track record is a 90% live release rate, is what they've told us.
Can we ask for those numbers, just so we know that we're getting that service?
We can check on that.
So, the last portion of this, parvo outbreak events and after-action. So, in the previous slide, where we had those higher euthanasia and died in shelter numbers, it was due to this. We had three outbreaks at the end of last year. When a par, it's canine parvovirus. It's very infectious. It spreads very easily. It affects mainly the young and old. And generally speaking, it's fatal, unless you want to provide a lot of care. And assuming the animal survives, they're not the same for the rest of their life. So it's, it's very serious when you get an outbreak in your facility, and we had three last year. This requires a 14-day facility quarantine and closure on each outbreak. Once the outbreak is done, the shelter is deep cleaned and sanitized prior to reopening. To help mitigate and address this, shelter animals now get fully vetted to include the parvovirus vaccine with their initial vet checkup once they're ours. So, animals that come into our care without any kind of identification, collar, tag, microchip, we hold for 72 hours. At the end of that 72 hours, they're ours, and we can dispose of them how we see, whether that's transfer, euthanize, put up for adoption. We'll make them an appointment, and they'll go see the vet at the first, first available appointment. Animals that come in with ID, microchip, collar, something that tells me who they are, it's a seven-day hold. And then, at the end of the seven days, if they go unclaimed, they're ours. We'll make that Some projects that we have and have completed, we had a plumbing project where we installed a, a cold and hot water line in our kennel, and then had a 50-foot reel hose put in so we can easily clean the kennels. That has made a huge difference, having water right there in the kennel. We had the ventilation and duck work completely replaced and updated. That was an attempt to correct some heating and cooling issues that we had. We have a room temperature monitoring system now in every room that tracks the temperature and humidity every 10 minutes, and it's recorded to a log, and that log's kept for two years so we can see historical trends and seasonal trends to see how well heating and cooling is in the facility. We have a shelter weekly towel service. Before, we were having to take our towels and laundry and take them to a laundromat and have them laundered and then picked up and brought back. It's very time-consuming. Now, we have a contract with Aramark now. They come every Friday. They drop me off new towels. They pick up the dirty ones. Makes life so much simpler. We have an artificial turf for the dog run project that's pending. We would like to replace our play yard with some artificial turf. Be a better outcome for the animals. Much easier to sanitize, easier on their feet, easier to clean, don't have to worry about mud. It would be great. Additional improvements to the HVAC system, we're going to see in the summertime how well the duck work works out. If it's something that still needs some work, we're considering updating and putting in a mini-split system. It's basically the overhead units that go in every room, so you have better temperature control. Dog run fencing update and awning, you can kind of pile that in with the artificial turf. It's just a general improvement that we want to make to the backyard, make it more suitable and welcoming to people who come in. Cat kennel replacements, that's a pending project. The dog kennel floor being resealed, a pending project, and then ceiling tile replacements. And that is a project that we're currently working on. And that is it. Any questions?
I just want to say you, you're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Chief Stewart, I got a text from Chief Rime a few minutes ago.
Did you?
I'll share it with you. He's, he's watching, so he may get mad at me for sharing this with you, but too bad, chief. He said, "I sent my fedora in, in my absence. I had this big team lead in for the video, and I'm watching. My team is doing great." So I texted him back and said, "Yep, they're doing a fantastic job." So I just wanted to share that with you. He was really impressed with the presentation.
We were thinking about using this hat as like a talking stick, so whoever's up here had to wear the hat.
Like the conk.
Well, they didn't really go for that.
Like the conk from Lord of the Flies. The one question I had for, for both you and Chief Collier, turnover rate or attrition in both departments, percentage rate versus what is average? What are we talking about?
I know for the PD, I don't have that rate right off the bat. The, we've been fairly steady this past year or two. Of course, recruiting is always hard, and that's the hardest thing. Like I said, we're, we're only down one right now in dispatch and in patrol. So, obviously, whenever we retain people, it's better, and we try to do everything we can to keep our retention rate, you know.
The percentage, I don't have it right there, but we're averaging one to two a year that we, we move or change. But with the group we've got going right now, have a, just in the, talking to the captains, if you have a pulse on them, we may, this may stay for a little while. I think we've got a good group in, and everybody seems to be pretty happy. So, cross your fingers that we can get some tenure in some of these, but this group we have right now, I think, might stay for a little bit, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to item number three, is clarification of consent or action items listed on today's council agenda. Does anybody have anything that they need for clarification for or questions answered?
Pretty simple, straightforward.
Yep.
If there are none, we'll adjourn work session at 7:20. Give everybody about five Welcome to the regular session of the Highland Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, February the 27th. The meeting is called to order at 7:25. Let the record show all council members are present. And then, please join Councilmember Hurston, leading our prayer and pledge.
Okay, I think in this world right now, we need unity, so if we could all rise for the Lord's Prayer, that would be great. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. For the kingdom and the power and the glory of yours now and forever.
Amen.
Amen, Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Now join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, and the religion to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, ma'am. Next on the agenda, item number eight, Mayor and Council reports on items of community interest pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415. City Council may report on the following items: expression of thanks, congratulations, or condolences; information about holiday schedules; recognition of individuals; reminders about upcoming city council events; information about community events and announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Does anybody have anything they want to report? The one thing I'd like to bring out is, all of council, I think I can speak for everybody. We want to send out our heartfelt condolences to our city attorney, Kevin Loughlin, who lost his wife this last weekend to cancer. So Kevin, if you're, I know you're probably not watching, but hopefully he can feel our heart, our prayers for him and his family.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say something, please. I would like to express my appreciation for the Highland Village Fire Department, especially Tony Valdelamar, is that correct? Yeah. He recently did a CPR training class at the fire department last week. I participated in with my wife and a group of other people, young and older people, and I have to say it was a very good program. I really appreciated the department putting that on. I think it's a very beneficial program for each and every one of us, and I encourage all of our citizens to partake in the next event. So thank you very much. It was truly, it will truly be a life-saving event for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right, I think we have a guest, a guest from the Salvation Army.
Well, good evening, and thank you all for allowing us to be here. Just say thank you. And we're, we're glad to be here. I have with us Bridget McIntosh. She's our volunteer specialist for Collin and Denton County, helping us to, to get the volunteer support that we need. And I'm Major Dwayne Durham, Corps Officer for Salvation, one of the two Corps Officers. My wife's also, Major Marion is a Corps Officer as well, of Lewisville. And want to thank you, Mayor, and city leaders for participating in the 2023 Lewisville Area Mayor's Red Kettle Challenge. Your leadership inspired other area mayors to participate in that challenge. Flower Mound Mayor Derek France, Bartonville Mayor Jaclyn Carrington, and Lewisville Mayor TJ Gilmore. And so we have a certificate that we've brought with us tonight, and you know how we give you those little red bells to ring during the season? Well, we got you a bigger one that you can have to...
You want me to come down?
Do what, yes, we'd love for you to come down, that you can, you know, use at your discretion. But we very much appreciate all of you for helping to raise much-needed funds for the programs and services that we at the Salvation Army in Lewisville provide, addressing family instability caused by poverty and homelessness and addiction. And I'm happy to report here tonight that we had some successful efforts. For the Highland Village team raised $954, and much of that was in that one bell-ringing day. 879 in-person and then 75 online. But most importantly, we really owe you a debt of gratitude for your efforts inspired all these teams to raise a total of $5,391 during that time. And we very much appreciate leading the charge to help provide hope and help to neighbors in need. I just want to share one very quick story with you. Very recently, I met a gentleman who was a veteran, and he came to our office to receive some assistance. And he'd been living in a hotel, ran out of money, and was living in his car, 84 years old. And he's on a very modest fixed income. And he came to our facility, and he met with our case management specialist, and then I met with him for a period of time as well. But he benefited... But he benefited from the food that we offer, whether it's through our food pantry and our daily lunch service. We were able to help him with rental assistance. We networked to be able to get him an apartment, and gave him a gas card, and just some wonderful services we were able to provide because of this kind of support that we receive. And so this gentleman was very much relieved, and now he has a place to call home, and feeling secure and being able to have his needs met. And we continue to see needs increasing, and our services are needed, and we thank you all for your support. And in fact, one of the services we provide is a warming center, and we were open for 10 straight days in January. And I'm leaving all the equipment inside, we usually put it in a shed, but I'm leaving it inside. That way we won't have to do that, you know, because if I were to put it outside, then we'd have to bring it back in. But anyway, thank you all so much for your support, and we hope to have that this year as well, in 2024. So thank you all, and God bless you, and I think we'll have that presentation right now.
Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You can ring it because it's-
Thank you very much. And I just, I think we had, I think we had 100% participation from all of council for the ring the bell. So this is a, this is very much a team, a team accomplishment, so-
Now, what I would challenge you to do is hold that while you're on that scooter thing if I just-
Bring it in, let's try it.
May I have a picture?
Sure, yeah. May I use this instead of the gavel tonight? Thank you again so much. It's such a pleasure to work with you all every year.
Thank you so much.
Look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much for your support.
This is a nice bell.
Did some quick math while you were down there, and while our city is about 6% of the combined three cities' population, our contribution to this year's Red Kettle Challenge was 20%.
That's right.
So we outperformed our small cities, so we'll do it again.
That's right.
Thank you all so much.
What does Phil Cilizano, our Parks Director, say? Small but mighty?
Yes.
Yeah, a wonderful town.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your, the effort, and we look forward to it this next year as well. All right, moving on to item number nine, City Manager and Staff Reports. Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I have a couple of items. First, we're working again with New Way Insight to conduct a resident satisfaction survey. The survey went live last Thursday, and will be open until March 31st. The survey will take 15 to 20 minutes to complete, and should be taken in one sitting because closing part way through causes the survey to restart. The responses will, to this survey will help us serve you better, the citizens, and we value your opinion, so please participate. If you've noticed the traffic signal at Highland Village Road in Brazos, they're moving right along. The street signs were going up today. It will look like it'll slow down here pretty soon because the work that they'll be doing will be underground, wiring and things like that, but they're moving along very well. The Parks and Recreation Department is now accepting applications for artists who would like to participate in the Highland Village Art Festival. The event will take place on Saturday, May 4th, at the shops at Highland Village. The deadline to submit is April 5th, and details of the application can be found at highlandvillage.org artfestival. And the next HVBA Community Coffee is scheduled for Thursday, March 7th, at 8:00 a.m., and it'll be right here in this room. Those wishing to attend should RSVP to hvba@highlandvillage.org, and the event is free to attend. And that's all I have.
Well, it's not quite all you have. There's a video.
One more thing, yes.
Yeah, so we got the State of the Cities video. Today we had the State of the Cities luncheon, and each city does their own kind of presentation. The city of Lewisville, their mayor likes to do a PowerPoint presentation. Our city and Flower Mound both usually do pretty creative videos. I think our video was better, so strap in. It's about, what, eight or nine minutes, I think, but it's entertaining. And I'll just say, you know, I'm a sports fan, and one of the groups I follow on social media is called the Dumb Dads, and they do a really cute video every Thursday morning where they take dad issues and turn it into like a post-game press conference that coaches have in the sports world. That's kind of where the idea came from, and Lori, and Lori and Andrew, and Jenny, and Nathan, our intern, all helped put this together, so I want to thank them for their hard work. And in my, in my comments today at the luncheon, I gave out a lot of thanks to our department heads. I'm not, if you weren't there, you missed it, you'll have to wait till I do it again at a later date, which is a little bit more appropriate, but I will, I promise. But anyway, the video, it's a, it's a cute video, and Ollie makes his acting debut.
HVTV, home of the annual State of the City, coming to you live above Highland Village, live from the HV Blimp. I'm Phil Schmidt. Alongside me is our Hall of Fame co-host, Andrew Foreman.
Thanks, Phil. The moment is nearly here. There are so many emotions Team Highland Village is experiencing right now. Pride, excitement? We are counting down the minutes, starting now.
That's right. Today is the big day, the annual end of the season, Team Highland Village presser.
You know, something's got to be said for the GM for Team Highland Village, Mayor Jaworski, since this is his last year with the team.
That's true. While he's led the team, we know he'll give credit to his head coach and all coordinators for the amazing wins they had this year.
Go away, cheese!
Oh, I believe the teams are ready to hit the platform. Let's go live now to the Team Highland Village presser.
Hey, everybody. I'm going to make a brief statement, and then I'll take your questions. On a day like today, the last time I get to address all of you, I want to express gratitude first. I'm extremely grateful for Team Highland Village. They work like crazy, they care about our community, and I want to give them a ton of credit for that. We've had a tremendous year. I have some of the staff here with me today. I want to take this opportunity to remember the team's accomplishments and to look at what the focus is going to be going forward. So with that, I'll take some questions. Sam from the Cross Timbers Gazette.
Thank you. So Team Highland Village just celebrated its 60th year. What are you going to be doing to keep the guts of the city ready for the next 60 years?
You know, I feel really lucky as a, as a GM that we've, we've been able to put a really great staff together. Our head coach, who you'll hear from later, Paul Stevens, he's done a great job of keeping us under the cap, finding good free agents. But, you know, it takes a tremendous amount of planning and ability and focus to be as successful as we've been. And as far as looking forward goes, I've got our Transportation and Hydration Coordinator, Scott Kristin, here. He can, he can walk you through those future plans. Scott?
Scott Kristin, Transportation and Hydration Coordinator. All that works is building the future.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everybody. It does take, it does take focused planning in the 2022 bond in our capital improvement program that has set the stage for us. This year, we're focusing on Highland Shores Boulevard with an asphalt overlay from Highland Village Road to Briar Hill Boulevard. We're in design for the next section of Highland Shores Boulevard from Briar Hill to Twin Cove. That will include replacement of all the concrete paving, and we're planning to enhance drainage and pedestrian and traffic safety by adding traffic calming options. Highland Village Road is also in the game plan. We've just upgraded the traffic signal to bring it to current technology standards, and we're focusing on the design and reconstruction of Highland Village Road from Brazos Boulevard to the Kansas City Southern Railroad.
Phil Lozano, Fields and Play Coordinator, small but mighty. You in the cowboy hat.
You've been successful at providing open space in community events. Given that success, how do you plan to keep that momentum going?
Yeah, well, we're very aware, and we know who we are and what we're working for. We are dedicated to improving the quality of life in Highland Village. And after last season and seeing the tremendous growth in pickleball, our team converted the Unity Park tennis courts to pickleball courts, and we've seen a tremendous success with that. We've been working on our plays for our teenagers, and this year we are adding lighted basketball courts to Unity, which should provide a big win.
Elliot from Field and String.
Pilot Knoll Park is another gem in Highland Village. You've applied for a grant to build cabins and didn't receive it last year. What was your mindset going into the application process for the second time?
You know, that was a tough loss last year, and it stuck with us for a while. It was hard to get over, but, you know, we went back, looked at the film, and, you know, we worked, you know, we worked really hard to get better in the offseason, so we looked to learn from our mistakes in the past, and, and we knew we had to get back to the original game plan. So Phil can tell you how he and his team shifted the mindset to make this, this effort successful this year.
We worked with our teammates at Texas Parks and Wildlife and the Corps. We trusted in them to guide us and knew we couldn't do this by ourselves. We've just received notice that we've won the grant. That's 750K, Mayor, matching funds to help us build 14 cabins, enhance our camping areas and amenities, and another win is the grant funding for the planning of the boat launchery build area.
Chief Ryan, Safety and Security Coordinator, here, sir.
The next question, we're going to go to Jenny from scooters.com.
So you've experienced some injuries related to kids riding scooters. What are you doing to prevent those injuries and keep everyone healthy and safe?
You know, the injuries drew our attention to the need to update our game plan related to scooters. You know, we formed a special task force to look at the way we're doing things and how we can go forward, with two things in mind. I call them the two E's, education and enforcement. And before I let the chief talk about this, you know, one of the things I've stressed in communicating with the community is, this isn't just a city, parents have to be involved too. You know, everything starts at home, education and enforcement starts at home, so we're trying to make sure that they, they come up with their own conversations to have with the kids and come up with their own rules that they can enforce. And then the chief, I'll let him explain the task force and what they came up with.
You're so right, Mayor. The team updated our ordinance to address all micro mobility devices in Highland Village. The biggest part of that, we require helmets now for those under 18, and we created other safety rules. We're focusing right now on education with our school resource officers in our schools, getting ready for spring break and summer preparation also. To help enforcement and training and education on those trails, we were graciously granted two micro mobility devices from Trike to patrol our trails and help through that whole process. Can't wait to see them out there.
Let's go to Cindy at Community Impact.
Yeah, see, you were all about the community. You have recruited a new team member, Ollie. How has he affected the team and the community?
Well, everyone will tell you that Ollie's been a tremendous impact on our team and on our fans. He fit right into his role to be an emotional support for those dealing with trauma or difficult situations. Everyone's drawn to him as he's drawn to everyone else. While he's working on his catching game, overall, his plays are always successful.
Chief Collier, EMS Coordinator, making a difference.
Ferguson, the red kilt, you've got a question?
The Health and Medical Team here have done an outstanding job, and you saw a need to make a different approach to cut down on the reliance on outside partners. So how have you implemented this change?
You know, like we do after every, after every game, you know, we go back, we get the coaching staff together, we look at the tape, find ways to improve, and I think our EMS Coordinator, Chief Collier, has done an outstanding job putting a plan together, so I'll let him outline that.
We reviewed our stats and saw that our peak demand is from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It made sense to implement a peak demand ambulance to meet the needs and reduce mutual aid from our partners. We're continuing to watch closely the stats, and so far, everything's lining up as it should.
Ferguson, was there a follow-up there?
You've also entered into an agreement with Flower Mound in Lewisville for a joint fire training facility. What made it an attractive option for you, and how does it benefit the city?
Well, you know, it takes tremendous focus and consistent training to keep our teams ready to go. Being part of this training facility, at less than 8% of the construction and ongoing maintenance cost means more training opportunities in different scenarios with the teams we engage with on a regular basis.
Paul Stevens, head coach, Highland Village is calling the right plays.
We're going to go to Tabitha from Texas Town and City next.
Team Highland Village had a tremendous year. As you look at the future, how do you replicate and build on the wins you've had?
Well, Tabitha, first, we do not look to the Cowboys for inspiration. Our financial position is strong. We have our game plan for the future right here to remain financially viable as we approach build-out. I'll tell you what, I got to draw this up for you. Now, members of the press, don't zoom in too close, we don't want Flower Mound or Lewisville seeing our play sheet here, but we continue to lower our property taxes right here, yet we continue to deliver superior service right there. Our retail and restaurants, right there, they're our all-stars. The shops at Highland Village just invested in their center to bring the Cheesecake Factory to our community, and more work is planned to keep the center relevant for our community. And I've got just one thing to say about that. How about those cheesecakes?
No, wait, no, wait a minute, you missed something, because you get a pulling guard here, a pull here, this guy's going to do a kickout, he's going to counter, come up here, and that's how you get your increased sales tax, and boom, that's a win.
General manager knows more about coaching than the coach. But anyway, and you can put this in two-inch headlines, Highland Village will win.
So for our next question, we're going to go to Michelle from Municipal Principal.
As the general manager of Team Highland Village, where does this all put you in the power rankings?
It's a really great question, and I like the way you asked it. Highland Village is the third safest city in Texas. Our residents are proud to live here, and we're ranked as the third best place in Texas to raise a family. All cities played hard, but of course Highland Village is the best place to be. It's been my honor to lead this team in my hometown. The love of Team Highland Village is what has motivated me every day. I'm grateful for the team, our community, and the opportunity I've had to be a part of something really special. Again, to Paul Stevens.
All right, that'll be posted on social media like imminently. We'll see how many clicks it gets. Moving on to item number 10, Visitor Comments. Anyone wishing to address city council must complete a speaker's request form and return to the city secretary in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act. City council is restricted in discussing or taking action on items not posted on the agenda. Action on your statement can only be taken at a future meeting. In order to expedite the flow of business and to provide all visitors the opportunity to speak, the mayor could, may impose a three-minute limitation on any person addressing the city council. Mrs. Miller, has anybody signed up? All right, moving on to Consent. All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so that it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the agenda, the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes the following items. Number 11, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on February 13th, 2024. Item number 12, consider Resolution 2024-3113 cancelling the March 12th, 2024 city council meeting. And item number 13, consider Resolution 2024-3114 cancelling the May 4th, 2024 general election for city officers and declaring unopposed candidates elected to office. Is there any discussion needed for any of the agenda items included on the consent agenda? All right, I entertain a motion. I'll make a motion. Go ahead. Mr. Cox?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve items 11, 12, and 13 on the consent agenda.
All right, there's a motion to approve, and anybody have a second?
I have a second.
A second by Mr. Fiorenza. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries 7-0. Moving on to Action, there is nothing on the Action Agenda, so now we'll move on to- So now we'll move on to late work session. Does anybody have anything they want to report or any future agenda items they want to discuss? Yes, ma'am.
I would like to, for a future agenda, discuss a resolution to send to the county election department to have all four Highland Village precincts, that's everyone in Highland Village, vote at one location for Election Day.
All right, everybody get that? Anybody have anything else? And if that's the case, we will adjourn at 7:50.